Director Edwards, please say nothing.
Jimika Edwards.
Thank you. So she's present. You have a call, Director Lockett informed me that he was going to be late. So again, thank you. Alright, let me go into my due to a spiel. Thank you so much for attending. Thank you for community for coming out. Thank you parents, students, teachers, educators, supporters. It's always a blessing to serve in this capacity. It is, it is, it is hard work and it is God's work. And I thank you for the opportunity to be able to do that. Let God say so is my mantra. Proverbs 15:1. This is way ready. Alright, this time we're gonna have a moment of silence. Tonight, we're gonna ask you to do an extended moment of silence to do a personal and private prayer for Director Ricky Wood as he continues to recover. Ask you to do a personal and private prayer for our teachers, our parents, they're the first day of school, a lot of stuff going on, our students, our safety officers, our community supporters, specifically our nurses and our social workers. And I just want a personal and private prayer also for our special education teachers who are carrying a heavy load this year as we continue to recover. And try to get more, or to support us to make sure we continue to support student success. After that moment, extended moment of silence, now we're gonna hold you two moments. After that extended moment of silence, we're gonna do the pledge, then we'll move into our special recognition. So at this time, let's stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our Superintendent Barbie's special recognition.
So a big day today. First day back to school, see lots of new faces. Thank you. It's great to see everyone today, but we have some special guests tonight. And Mr. Carr is gonna come up and talk to us about that, we're very excited. You wanna come on up, Ms. Carr?
Alright, so first we want to recognize our students. These students, we're acknowledging them for an outstanding score on their AP exam. So let's give them a hand in the background. This is AP, anything you do. So the first person we're gonna recognize for an outstanding performance on the English Language and World History AP exam is Melvin Henderson.
He must be great for college, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe. Still, we have Jasmine Lever for outstanding performance on the English Literacy lever, I'm sorry, for outstanding performance on the English Literacy AP exam.
Congratulations.
There is Miller for outstanding performance on the US History AP exam. Okay, Maya Stroller for outstanding performance on the English Language AP exam. Last but not least, Philip Parla for outstanding performance. Amari and Tucker for outstanding performance on the English Literacy AP exam. Alright, next we want to recognize community member, Reverend Jordan Glenn. We want to recognize you and thank you for your hospitality, dedication, and commitment to the staff and students of Palm Hill School District by hosting our convocation. Not only hosting it, but making sure that your church provides snacks, they were just warm, and also they pray for us. So that goes a long way. Thank you.
It's been nice to meet you. I want to talk to Sasha. Thank you so much for everything. Thank you so much.
Which is AP like that.
Okay, this next group of... Okay, alright, this next group, we know that getting ready for school is very hard. Not only for students, not only for parents, but it's a community thing, all hands on deck. But the people who really, really do a lot of things that go unnoticed are our administrators. So we want to take time to acknowledge our school administrators, our principals, our assistant principals, who worked through a shortened summer. They cleaned floors, washed windows, picked up desks, called teachers. They helped through the hiring process. They just did so many things. And so many of our years were wasted on the back burner because they know the school is a problem. So we thank them. We thank their families for allowing them to have the time to be dedicated and committed to this district. So we just want to give them a big hand, and we also want to recognize them with awards.
We don't see everybody, but as we call, y'all come up and stay.
Come fast, walk as fast as you can. Dr. Ronald Loren. Also Palm Hill High School, we have Mr. Thaddeus Pearson. He's still working. Okay, next we have our new administrator, Ms. Kim Harris. Palm Hill Junior High, Ms. Latonya Paige Harris. You notice many of them are still smiling at the end of the session. Also Palm Hill Junior High, Ms. Trina Green. Also Palm Hill Junior High, Ms. Lakeisha Goins. James Matthews, we have Eric Cross. Also James Matthews, we have Ms. Tameka Wright. Crete Kenderson, we have Ms. Marcenia Peoples. She now has a nephew over there. With our assistant principal, Ms. Sharina Sanders. Southwood Elementary School, we have Dr. Paula Watson. Also Southwood, we have Mr. David Sims. We have Dr. Tammy Doctor Wilson, 34 years old. Also alongside with Dr. Doctor Wilson is Ms. Panisha Sargent. Alright, Broadmore, we have Ms. Teresa Parker. Last but not least, we have a Broadmore as well, soon to be Dr. Timothy Smith.
Tighten up, tighten up. Two rolls. No, but I think I may be able to get it.
Alright, thank you very much. At this time, if there is one that wants to leave before you die, you're welcome.
Lord, I just noticed, forgive me, I just noticed I left PPC off the agenda. I've changed up the agenda for the new public comment. So we do have Mr. Smith here. Is PPC one of his speak time?
Alright, thank you very much Superintendent Barbara Roberts. Do not recognize the committee? Speak now, please.
You can go ahead.
Are you speaking tonight?
Yeah.
He said it's on there, it's down on there.
It's item 10. Number 10.
You guys speak up louder.
Alright, now we're gonna move to adoption of the minutes. Regular board meeting, regular board meeting, June 23rd, 2025. A special call board meeting, June 21st, 2025. Board members, you received those documents. Any questions, comments, concerns about those minutes? If there are none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting, June 23rd, 2025, and the special call board meeting, June 21st, 2025. July, I'm sorry. July, thank you. We move to property second. Ready for question? Any questions, comments, concerns? Here you none, all in favor, say aye. Aye for me. All opposed, say no. The ayes have. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to our financial report. Superintendent Barbara.
Board, in your packet, you'll see your normal financial report, but I do want to draw your attention to especially that first document because we're keeping track of our tax dollars. So that first document, that's our local revenue. So we have closed out the year for local revenue. Now, we still have what we call period 13, where we clean up the rest of the books, but most everything is clean. And so what you'll notice is in June, we received about $1.4 million of the less of our tax dollars. But I want you to notice, the total received revenue for the district this year into local tax was $26,362,309. We had budgeted based on a 94% collection rate, okay? And so based on a 94% collection rate, you will see that we were budgeting to collect $26,891,000. So we were less $529,000 in local tax revenue. Now, the important thing about that is something that we talked about in our financial training. This is because we are guaranteed a 98% collection rate. And so since we did not have, since it wasn't a 98% collection rate at this time, we were at 94, the state shores that up. And so we received our last check of our foundation funding, plus the state sent us a check for $922,000 for that, for that funding to make sure that we got our 98% collection rate. So we are good as far as that goes, but I wanted to make sure you were keeping track of that. The next documents that you'll see is our monthly board reports from period 1 to period 12. So that's how we would end the school year. Again, like I said, we're in period 13 where there's some cleanup with federal grants and things like that. And so we're, we're good there. The next document you see is just period 12, so that's all the money we collected and expended within the month of June. And then the next two you'll see is our bank register. Of course, we're still with a zero variance. We've continued to zero variance for over the, for over a year, every month this full year. Our finance departments make sure that we have a zero variance. As far as our outstanding checks, if you'll notice, they've been cleared. The latest outstanding check now is for June, which is good, so we're keeping that taken care of. And then the last couple documents that you see are all about the building fund. And so I do want to draw your attention to the bond proceeds register document because we were ending out fiscal year '25. And so just in summary, I want you to notice with every, it shows the month, starting in July 24, when we first got that bond proceed, all the way to June 25. And so this will show every bit of payment that we've had for East Harding and our architect. And then also it shows the interest that's been accrued through that, the bond money being in, in the bank. And so over the two fiscal years, we've actually earned $3.323,000 in interest out of our bond money. So this is good. This is money that goes right back into the building as well. And then the last document on the building project that I want to, again, call your attention to is our total building project cost. This document is also represented in the ones we just talked about, but the ones I just explained have the debits and credits. This is just expenses that we've had. And currently, we're at $31,883,556 spent for our new high school project. And we're a little over one year into the project. And we've got a little, right at one year to be done with the project, and we'll talk more about that. But one more thing that I was gonna announce in the superintendent update, but I'll say it now because it does have to do with financials. We're very, very happy to report that the federal government has released federal funds. And so Palm Hill School District will receive the federal funds that were allocated to us. One big specific expense was our 21cclc after-school program. We had one year left in a three-year program, and so we received that money. And then we also had applied for a new program, a new three-year program, and we've been told we will get that allocation as well. Title IV funds have also been released, and so we're excited about that. We're still working through those to making sure, but we were, we were looking to make some adjustments in our budget, and so we're, now we're pleased to say that we can continue with those federal programs. And Ms. Smith is here as well, so she's been working on that. But that's all I have for my financial update.
Alright, any questions, comments, concerns before I entertain a motion to approve the financial report? Alright, here you none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the financial report. As presented. We move to property second. Ready for question? Questions, comments, concerns? Here you none, all in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to board committee reports. Director Edwards, since you're on the phone, do you have any reports from your committee?
No reports or dates from my committee at this time.
Okay, thank you. Alright, the next committee, I guess I'll talk about executives. What have we been doing? We've been training. Director Corbin and I attended a recent training that was called, as we study law, Administrative Directors Hands-on Workshop for School Leaders. This was something presented by the ASBA. They had several dates, June 30th, July 7th, July 16th, and August 4th. Director Corbin and I attended. It was a very, very good training. Learned more about employment law, learned more about the ins and outs, we learned more about policies and about the appropriateness of things going forward so that we can improve as, as board members. Specifically with the new laws that are coming down from the state legislature. Also, just understanding what it means as it relates to the teacher fair of this, this act. And so that's what we did. It's executive, on a personal note. I attended a superintendent meeting with Superintendent Barbara of the Cos Springs and talked to new superintendents, were they first-year superintendents? First-year superintendents, always excited to represent the Palm Hill School District. Talked about more communication, talked about community relations, talked about how we've been able to do the things that we've been able to do for making a journey in the Palm Hill School District, coming out of state control, passing a building, building a new high school. And so it's always important that we continue to push that narrative positively. So I really enjoyed doing that. I had an opportunity through a request in the Southeast Arkansas Co-op to speak to the Strong Huttig School District, to talk to their board recently about, you know, communication, you know, you know, board dynamics, how you get the things done in the midst of this political climate. So I was thankful for that. I don't think there have been any other trainings that we've participated in from the executive side. So yeah, that's what we've done from the executive side. In terms of financial, what was our last financial training? It's prior to, prior to last board meeting. So the finance committee has, has not been, but we are prepared to be. If necessary, sometimes we have to do a special call because things come up that are, that are pressing. But we want to make sure we notify the community, and so everybody can be on page with that. So Director Woodmore is out, so we don't have a report from his committee. Director Lockett, anything from legislative side?
No.
Okay, no report. Alright, I always say the best for last. Dr. Cole.
Facilities. Okay, so good evening.
Good evening.
And we'll start off with our facilities report to let you know that, before we get to the good part, that we're working on, we started working on the track. So if you ride by there, you'll see it looks different. And we also have been working on the HVAC, we're looking to purchase the HVAC for the junior high right now, I think. And so we're waiting on some bids, because I think it's really hot. And so I guess the HVAC people are really working hard. And then the last but not least, we're gonna talk about progress of the high school. And also we have another extra treat that, so we're gonna let you see the outside where we are, and we're gonna see where we're going. Alright, this is all yours, Sean.
I appreciate it. As always, we'll kind of start with where we were at the end of last month and just kind of do a walk-through around the site and have everybody come see the, see the progress we're making. I know it's hot, but we as land use enjoy the weather itself a lot. So here's the right. You can see that this is the auditorium over here to your right, the CTE building. As you remember, we had just gotten the roof on right before the end of the, end of last month. This is coming around the front of the building. You'll start to see some of the steel coming out that is gonna be the main front entry space. This is coming around the classroom wing to the north. As you can tell, this, we've got the decking down. We'll be adding concrete to that here in just a minute. And you can kind of see, looking back into the cafeteria, it's really starting to take shape. The kitchen area is kind of where that hole is right now. It's still in process. We come around the north end. This is the safe room and practice gym. And this big opening with a crane in the middle, right here, that's actually for the wood floor of the arena. So that's kind of the star of the arena frame. Here's another look, a few days, about a week later, with most of the steel that went up for the arena. Starting to get the roof in place. Again, the big blockout is where the actual gym court will go. So that kind of gives you a feel of how big this building actually is. They look a little small in these drone videos sometimes. So kind of spinning around and looking, whoa, cut it a little short on me, sorry about that. This is coming down the second floor. Those guys are now on concrete floor that we talked about just a minute ago that we're pouring. This is looking into the cafeteria. Kind of give you a feel of how big the cafeteria is gonna be and the openness of it. It'll be a big two-story volume that will allow a great space for students while they're taking a break to lunch. You can kind of see some of the beams starting to come up right in here for the kitchen area. We're pouring the last little bit of concrete in the cafeteria there. Got a pump truck going in. You can now see the roof of the, of, excuse me, the arena. All the work and framing is complete. Kind of get a little better feel for the size of it, looking down where the court would be there. Looking back into your main courtyard area, getting that secure entry, secure vegetable for students in there, coming right into the media center. As you come around, you can start to see, we've got, now we've got the roof up on the top of the first story there. And the main entry is starting to take shape. You can see that overhanging and kind of what the main front of the school's gonna look like now. Starting to see some walls going up on second floor, the main floor decks poured. Right here, you've got the roof of the kitchen going in. Again, just some more of the framing work for the main auditorium. To the left over here is actually gonna be a big classroom wing. It'll come all the way down beside the auditorium. This whole space will be your main auditorium. Kind of give you a feel of walking in where some of the, the main entrances will be. If you ever wanted to know what it feels like to be on stage, you just turn right around and you look back to the back. Over here to the left, this is gonna be the main, there'll be a big two-story lobby in between these two buildings. You can kind of feel that the height of it, and half to the left will be the main entry for the auditorium. This is just kind of coming back to the main, to the front of the building. Give you a good bird's eye view of the overall process today. So kind of a bird's eye view of where we are with everything. And I think we're gonna turn it over to Clayton Vaden with Lewis Architects now.
Do I have any questions before we move on?
Yep.
Go ahead, Clay.
First of all, Barbara, and members of the board, thank you for being here. Very grateful. And yeah, so what Sean just showed you real life, we've got a model that hopefully will load here in a minute, that is what we call our working documents model. So this model is a, how we generated our, our large sheet of drawings. One thing we want to take a look at is just some, some of the, the spaces that are sort of nicer spaces that are gonna be available to the students. So you can see here, this, this is the courtyard. Get a little higher here. It's a little different when you're not using a computer, I'll do my best. We want to look at just how secure the courtyard is, but at the same time, how it will give a real open feel, and there's just so many things you can use this courtyard for. So what we're, we're outstanding right now is we're hundred above the lobby of the arena and auditorium. So this is the auditorium on this side, arena's on this side. So this is the auditorium on this side, arena's on this side. If I skip back a little further, you can see, uh, that entrance right here. So that would be for after-hours events. It would be, uh, student parking could come in from, will come in from that side. There's a checkpoint where everybody can come in in the morning. Uh, and then a lot of parts for, uh, like we're saying, the, uh, the play or ball game. And then also would be for the, uh, football ticket entrance, you can see right there. So that would let you, uh, come in the football. So, once you come through, um, if you're arriving the first day of school or, or before the morning of school, um, you can come through the lobby of the arena and, uh, auditorium and you'll pop out into this courtyard. Uh, directly across from courtyard, we'll have, uh, some, some artificial turf. Uh, so a- after lunch, wherever, if kids want to come out and hang out there. Anything you see that's green, we're, we're trying to be maintenance-free, so the artificial turf really allows that to be a, a soft, uh, surface, but at the same time, they're not mowing it and causing a lot of noise in there. And then all the way across, we have a, a, a stage and you can see kind of an amphitheater in the round. Uh, so this will be more than big enough to house the nine hundred students that we're planning for. Uh, it's gonna have a sound system in there, it's gonna allow for, if you wanted to have even kind of, you know, some special bench, serve food out there, we'll have that set up where you can have a buffet, uh, style type of food. And, uh, then, y'all remember a long time ago, we first started designing, wanted to, uh, have a nod back to the history of the old high school with, and the old bridge. I talked about that either when I was in high school, we'd come down here and we thought that was so cool to have a bridge running across the different buildings. And so this, this bridge right here comes out on the second floor of the, uh, this is a classroom wing. It runs in front of the cafeteria and goes all the way across to the, uh, gym. So if you're gonna have, uh, tech assemblies or anything going on during the day, uh, you can come across the bridge, go into the second floor of the arena. And then that's, the arena's a top loader style, so spectators will come in at the top and go all the way around and go down into all the seating. So that, that'll be a really nice arena, we've got twenty thirty seats there, uh, and you can host the state tournament if you choose to. Uh, so, and then you can see, as Sean talked about, you see all the glass, even on the bridge, you're able to look down, uh, through the glass into the cafeteria. Uh, and that's, uh, really darn large, a lot of amenities, got a little coffee shop in there. Uh, what we call scatter serving, you can go into the serving area and you're able to, uh, a lot of different menu items, a lot of different options. Uh, let's see, what else am I missing? So this media center, I think I can go into that, we can kind of spin around, look back through the courtyard. So, so we really wanted the, the courtyard and the, uh, the media center to be... Trying to drive the ball, sorry. Really wanted those to be well-connected. So we had, we've got in the door a canopy that you can step out from the, um, the media center. Uh, it's a two-story media center, uh, the volume is, um, and just several different areas. It's got a, an college and career, um, area right outside of the media center. It has several, uh, collaborative areas where you can, you can, um, students can, can gather up and work projects together. Obviously books, it's got several, uh, conference and study areas that are, that's glass, it's closed in, but you can, uh, sign up to, to, uh, go, go hang out in those areas. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna initially get up here and spin around once we're ready. So, so now we're kind of hovering around the top of... See here. As you spin around. Looking back from the entrance, the main entrance to the building, up here, where Sean was trying to show us. Uh, this is the ninth grade academy here, main entrance here, you come through, you've got your two-story classroom room wing here, and, um, you can look down, you've got the two-story classroom comes around and pops into the cafeteria right there, that's your, that is your, uh, safe room, practice gym, which that's more than enough room to handle all the students, administrators, teachers, everybody in there. So, and arena, auditorium, and career and tech. You can also see over here, the career and tech has a secure fence that's, uh, opaque, that you, you know, you'll have a lot of raw materials being put into that area. We've got three bays, service bay and that, uh, but you can see this in the media center and then have a look down at the courtyard. So, so this model is, it's a little contrary about, uh, just moving around it. It's got a lot of, lot of damage and, uh, it's, again, it's got every, if I can fly through it better, it's got every detail of all the stairs, all the finishes, everything. And, and looking back, you can see how the, uh, the library and across the, uh, courtyard, the auditorium and arena lobby lineup. It really sets up for a dramatic setting to have some formal things in that courtyard as well as every day, just opportunity to hang out after lunch. And there's covered, covered areas that you can go outside and eat undercover as well. So, anyway, uh, if y'all have questions, I'll be, I can answer quickly, but thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you for that drill down, Scotty. That's good.
Good job. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank, it's my report.
Right, thank you very much. I think that brings us to the end of our committee reports. Uh, at this time now, we're gonna light PPC up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I hope everybody's doing well and rested from, uh, we're getting ready to rest from the first day. Uh, I want to be brief, I just wanted to update you guys on, since we started the new school year. Uh, we're getting ready to form, formulate a new PPC. Uh, that PPC will, we'll go through that process after our August meeting with the current PPC. And just so that we will, are clear on how those elections and things will take place, I'll go through that process with you guys again. Uh, nominations and elections will take place by building via Google Form. Once that happens, uh, the elementary campuses will elect two representatives. And then our secondary campuses will elect three representatives. And once those representatives have been elected, they will formulate the PPC for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Okay? And then after we've done that, then we'll, that new PPC will come together and accept the agenda and elect officers within themselves, uh, on moving forward. So, just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that and, uh, we'll have all that in place, uh, hopefully by September. Any questions for me?
Nope, no questions comes concerns. I, I do want to say that I'm not gonna talk to the board about it. It's, once that new PPC, uh, comes together, that we sit down and have a special call meeting together and should have talked about some initiatives that you talked about last year. Also highlighted that what we're doing with our finances to make sure we're on the same page.
Good deal. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. All right, Superintendent Barberie, your report.
Thank you, board. And, or if my switch-up PPC on the agenda, I appreciate you being patient with that. And so, um, tonight, I have a few things on the report that I do want to share. I've, I've started since we're at a new school year, I've started a new template for our, um, superintendent update that I give every month, but I wanted to make sure that we continue to share our vision. Um, and this is a vision that, that was created when, um, the community was brought together with a strategic plan. And since that one vision was created, we've had new administration, which myself was new, uh, and then of course the new board. And so we've taken that vision and created the vision that we have as a district through y'all's, uh, the board's vision and through the leadership that we've had in our leadership meetings. And so our vision, our district vision is that Pampas School District will be a safe, supportive, and student-centered community where every child is believed in, challenged, and empowered to overcome barriers, achieve at high levels, and pursue the college and career goals they set for themselves. We love that. And the challenge this school year for our administrators and our students and our teachers is to actually know what our vision is for Pampas School District and be able to talk about that. And, um, I asked, uh, Mr. Bennett and our communications team, how, how could we do this to where it would come to life and make it easy? And I love the graphic, this was a brainchild of Mr. Bennett after I said, hey, I need something easy for our students to really understand and remember, and our teachers to understand and remember. And the truth is, is when we really looked at our vision, it is all about our students. And so it's a student-centered community. And so I wanted to represent, uh, that in our, in my update every month. And I'll share that with you guys every month so that we can continue to learn as well. Of course, student-centered decisions, so every month, my report will be based on students in these six systems. And so we'll start, uh, and I'm asked that, um, Ms. Latonya Rawls, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to talk about our twenty-four, twenty-five Atlas data. We have, uh, results as far as building level and district level and student level results. She's gonna share with you, um, tonight, some of our celebrations and looking at the things that we, we've gotta think about moving forward as well.
Well, we have to know, we even have to know the product.
Good evening.
Um, I'm excited to share this data with you guys, and this is preliminary data. But, uh, based on the data we have now, we have increased in revenue and math in the kitchen. And we also have, uh, uh, from our proficiency from cohort, uh, from third grade, so, I'm saying cohort, cohort. You see, the third, current third grade we got now, uh, compared to the third grade to nature. You see here, we're leveling up tonight. When we see fourth grade, yeah, we were at negative one, and this year we went up three percent. And it's just comparing fourth, fourth grade to fourth grade. But then we also have, let's see, uh, the fourth grade, from fourth grade to fifth grade, they went up fifty. So we are growing the kids, the size of the kids in fourth grade are growing, uh, when they get to the next level. And, and, and we'll see, and when we're doing an instruction at that grade, uh, kids are also growing as we, uh, uh, if I go down, this is literacy, and we go down here to math. We also see an increase in math. We see an increase in math, you can see here where, uh, our students in fourth grade went up four percent. We see our sixth graders went up ten percent. And we see where our eighth graders, uh, went up two percent. So, if you go down here to science, you do see where we have, we need some, we need to work on that range of signs. Uh, the third grades are, the proficiency rate, uh, go up sixty percent. And eighth grade had a one percent increase. But overall, the literacy and math, our students show up. And in proficiency and in, just growing from one grade up to the next. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Rawls. And so based on this data, our, our building principals with their teachers have been looking at data. In fact, last week, we had, uh, back-to-school professional development. And one of the first things they were doing, they were in collaborative team meetings, looking at the data. And so I want you to know that this was not off the press, and Ms. Rawls sent this information out that night. I think I got it in an email at three in the morning, she was still working on looking at the data. And so she saw it and, and disaggregated it as quickly as possible so that we can start moving. And one of the things we are paying attention to is the fact that there's a transition period. Those six... The sixth grade students, um, that changes, transition, they transition from elementary to junior high. There's a, we're looking at that transition year because there's some, there's some concerns with the data there. And then again, when you go from eighth grade or ninth grade, uh, eighth grade to ninth grade, there's a transition there as well. And so we're seeing that. But the most positive thing that we can talk about is the cohort data. When you're looking at students that are going, so our third grade students, what Ms. Rawls was explaining, the students that took the tests last school year, those, they were in fourth grade last school year, but when they were in third grade, that's that cohort grade, uh, the cohort gain. So when they were in third grade, they gained three percent proficiency to their fourth grade year. And the, a huge one especially, we look back in math, you know, we had a big growth from fifth grade, our fifth grade students in twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five grew ten percent in proficiency. And so that's looking at students, just, you know, the same cohort of students, um, from one grade as they grow to the next grade. So that, that gives a lot of credit to our teachers and our students for working so hard. And we're gonna continue to work on that growth and so on. Um, next day, board, today was the first day of school and it was a wonderful day. Mr. Carlock and several of us, but Carlock and I started at, uh, Forest Park Green Bowl and we made it to every campus. And yes, sir, Mr. Lockit, Forest Park Green Bowl was very busy. Let's give Ms. Peoples and her team a hand today. We welcomed over two hundred, right, Ms. Peoples? We welcomed over two hundred kindergarters to Pampas School District today, board. This is a huge and exciting growth for our people. Um, this is a class of two hundred and plus. And so we knew we were, we were planning for, um, two hundred, but we might have some additional students. And so we're looking at those numbers, we're continuing to make sure it stays consistent. There may be a possibility that we have to have a new kindergarten teacher, so I'll be bringing that to you if that's the case. Um, but we were very excited, there were, there were not perfect, it was not always perfect at every campus, but it was probably the best first day of school that I've ever had. And I want to say thank you to my students and my teachers, it was a great, and administrators, it was a great first day. So thank you, Mr. Carlock, we enjoyed it. We did, we, we did not get back to the office till three o'clock today. I even stopped by the bus garage, the, the kindergarten buses were out too, so, yeah. Um, one thing I do want to share with you, Mr. Sims, would you, uh, click on the Pampas School District Classroom recipe? So this school year, um, when the leadership team and when we were together, uh, at our leadership retreat, we talked about what do we want for every single classroom in Pampas School District? If Pampas School District had a mark and said, this is exactly the thing that's gonna happen in every single class, no matter what they teach, we called it the, the Pampas School District recipe. And so the example that I gave was, um, you know, my meemaw made my birthday cake every year and it was my favorite cake. My favorite cake is a yellow cake with chocolate icing, very simple. And in that cake, there were specific ingredients that you had to have. And so you had to have eggs, oil, and, and the flour, or the, the store box, if what she would call it, sometimes that Duncan Hine box. But you had to have those specific ingredients and that's what made that cake. Well, what we've decided as a leadership team and we've committed to is that we are going to have a classroom with these main ingredients. Every single classroom is going to have these things, and these are things that we're going to look for. And so when, when, um, as a board, as we do classroom walks, when y'all come and we visit campuses, everyone knows that these are the things that we're going to look for, that we believe are super important and have to take place in every classroom so that we can make our mark for our students and have an engaging classroom. Of course, these are just the main ingredients. Teachers can add and principals can add to those and, and add sprinkles when they want to and make it a little bit sweeter if they need to. But, um, I wanted to share this as a board, uh, wanted to share this with the board tonight so that you can understand, when we walk through the classrooms, the things that we're looking for, our teachers always monitoring learning, we're looking that the objectives are posted. At the secondary level, they call them PBOs, um, and then that's a performance-based objective. At the elementary level, we talk about ICANN statements so that students are knowing what they're doing, going to be learning every day. We're gonna be utilizing our district-adapted, high-quality instructional materials and we're gonna be looking for that in every classroom. Um, we want to have current student data posted. One of the things that we noticed this school year, we had some classroom teachers that had pretty large growth. And when we started looking at what their recipe was, those teachers had student data posted and talked about the data with their students, and this is at the elementary level, it's lowest first grade. And so those are some of the things that we want to share and make sure we're doing every single day in every classroom. Um, we're gonna have our social contracts. I was able to stop by and sign some social contracts, uh, today as well. And our students are learning what that is through our capturing kids' hearts. Um, we have anchor charts for students to learn, we're gonna have work samples and celebration walls, we're gonna have a calming space with our four capturing kids' hearts questions. And I loved it, I saw calming spaces at the high school already today. And I saw, I sat in one in, um, Burton's room at James Matthews, and it was the best. I liked it, it was fun. So, yeah, the teachers are really working to do these things. We're gonna utilize our Strix matrix, which is our PBIS matrix. Of course, no cell phones, which I'll give you an update on that. We're gonna have daily schedules posted, our safety drills and procedures posted. And then we're gonna continue to tell students why this is important and we're gonna teach it. Our teachers are gonna... Our teachers are going to teach it so that they know this is their recipe at Pablo High School and Pablo Elementarys, all of them. The next item that I'll talk about is human capital. We're almost fully staffed. We still do have some openings for special services. You'll see, we were able to add a name today for a special, a teacher for special needs at James Matthews, so that is going to be a new hire. We, we're, we are looking very tight. I think, again, the only other possibility might be kindergarten if that's the need. So I'm excited about that. We have training last week. We're Capturing Kids' Hearts. All of our new teachers have gone through, and if they weren't hired with us, we're going to put them back through so that they can go through our Capturing Kids' Hearts training. But every current employee went through a recharge training last month, I mean, last week. And if you haven't noticed, board, this is my shirt. Capturing Kids' Hearts, you have their, you have their mind. And so today, we were, this is Mr. Carlock's design, and so we wore it today for the first day, and we're able to give hugs, fist bumps, handshakes, and hafa hafa all day. And that's to our students and to our teachers, and it was a great day sharing Capturing Kids' Hearts. As far as our student support, I mentioned that we are going to continue with our grant funds for 21CCLC. And as far as bell-to-bell no-cell, I will give one great example. This morning, we were at the junior high, and it was on the seventh, eighth grade side, and we had the doors and kids were coming in, and a student, a new eighth grader was walking in, and he, his mom was saying goodbye, and he turned around and handed her his phone. And she said, I don't want that. And he said, well, I can't have it. And so she said, well, I don't have to keep up with it. And he said, well, okay. So he took it back and put it in the pouch. It was that simple, that he was, he was just handing over his phone to his mom. So later in the day, we were at, it was closer to lunchtime, so I was at Jack Groby, Pablo High today, and I saw no cell phones. Kids had them in their couches, but we sat in the cafeteria and had lunch. We were outside and enjoyed each other. Now, I know this is first-day jitters, and so, but today was a really good day for our transition for no cell phones. And so I want to say thank you. I talked to Mr. Smith and some teachers today, and I think we can attribute to the fact that we did the trial run in the spring. I think that was very helpful, and kids know what to expect. And it was a good day with no cell phones. We'll try tomorrow again. But as far as stakeholder community engagement, every campus has a parent-teacher organization. And so we want to make sure that our parents are aware of that, and we want them to inquire about it and join those parent-teacher organizations. We need everyone to be involved. And so I know that the principals, that would be, you would contact that building, but I want everyone to know that we want to be a part of the PTO. Also, this morning, I noticed that our GVI group was at our junior high, helping assist, and they were very present, and it was great, helping with students, because, you know, walking through the metal detectors with their phones and backpacks, they were there to help them and assist in every way, and it was a really positive morning. So it was really great to have that stakeholder help today, for sure. I think they'll be back again tomorrow. As far as, I'll skip down to facilities and transportation. I asked our architect Clayton Vane to come kind of share that 3D model, because in our last construction meeting, we did the flyby, and there were some things that he was able to share in that model. I thought, this is great to show, because we haven't seen like a rendering in a while. It's been since the beginning. And so having him share that, we can kind of start updating that way as well, because it's all coming together, as you well know. But under district operations and fiscal governance, you know that we have the board-to-board transfers that y'all have given me permission to sign off on, but I give that board-to-board transfer report every month. And I will say for this, from last month to now, we had eight students transfer out of the district through board-to-board, but we also had eight students transfer into the district through board-to-board. So it was kind of a wash, and so I'm excited about that, as far as not losing any students. As far as board meeting dates, I put that in your packet as far, so that we can go ahead and have it posted. Remember, we stated that we will meet the fourth Monday of every month, in case something happens, of course. Those things, it can be flexible and change, and we just have to notify the public. The only one that I was really wanting to ask you guys about was the March board meeting date. I highlighted that in your packet, because the fourth, the fourth one, the fourth Monday is spring break. So we can either meet the Monday before spring break or the Monday after spring break. And that's the only thing, I was just wondering if you guys wanted to give me an information on that, and we'll just go ahead and have those posted and ready to go. And then the next big thing I want to talk about are the board, the election timeline. And so as you well know, there was a new law that was passed this year called Act 503. And Act 503 said that there would be only elections during even years in March. And then that what we would need to do is anybody that was in an odd year, we would have to reorganize so that they could be elected in even years. And so based on our seven board members and the way that you guys already had lots, we reached out to legal. That was something that we talked about in our committee meeting, when we had that, to reach out to legal to see. Oh, the other part of the law is that you have to decide four-year or six-year terms. And so tonight, based on legal and information, I'd like to recommend that we have six-year terms as a board, and the board term, the board terms would be lined up starting in this March, so March of '26, it would be to where Board Zone 1, 2, and 3. Yes, okay, sure. Mr. Sims, hang on, I can send it to him real quick. I didn't put it up there, I should have.
Also for the media.
Yep, okay. Mr. Sims, I'm going to send you an email real quick. Can you, can you do that from there? Is that okay? Or I'll share it with you. Okay. Oh, I shared the wrong thing. That was the student transfers. Okay, now try. Okay. So we have seven board members. And currently, board members, Ms. Edwards, Ms. Calhoun, our, Ms. Edwards was supposed to be up for election this November. And since it's been deferred to March, Ms. Edwards would move to March of, or her zone, that board member's zone, would move to March of 2026. Zone 2 was up for election already in 2026, so that zone, so that person would still stay at 2026. However, it was, we had it at a November election, so that will move up to a March election. The next zone that was up is Zone 3, which was supposed to be in 2027. And so Mr. Whitmore is Zone 3 in 2027, so that will move up to 2026. So then we go to Zone 4, which was going to be elected in 2028, so that would stay 2028 because that is an even year. Zone 5 was up in 2027, so that will go to 2028. Zone 6, which was just voted on, was, was going to go up in 2028, so that will move to 2030. And Zone 7, which was just voted on, was supposed to go up in '29, so that will go to 2030. But this is a six-year term, and it makes it, because with the way that the law read, and that's what we were trying to figure out legal, was it said that all members of a school district board of directors shall be elected to a term of office of four years or six years in the length, and with the expiration of such terms so arranged that as nearly as possible, an equal number of positions are filled each, or every school board election. So in 2026, we will have to fill three board elections. '28 would be two, and '30 would be two. So that would be three, two, two. It does not take more action, we've just, but this is, you are going to do six-year
Any questions, comments, concerns, your board members?
You have a question? That is, let me go back. That is the interim board board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Barbara. All right, now we're going to move on to new business approval of purchases.
So in your packet board, you will see a purchase from CDW. CDW is the company that is on tax, but they do have the best prices for their Chromebooks, and this is a Chromebook refresher for our teachers. It is part of our five-year plan. These Chromebooks have gone out, they were purchased with the first bid of Esther money, and now it's time to repurchase. And we're going to purchase this out of federal money.
One other thing before we left it last, the board's own maps, are they posted on our website?
They are posted on the website.
Where exactly are they?
Under Board. Mr. Sims, will you navigate, so we can show everyone where that's at? Would you go to PBSD? And when you go under About Us, go to School Board. Okay, maybe I'm wrong. I thought they were under the School Board. Ms. West, where are they? No, they're posted. I can't, I'm going to look. I'm looking. Well, I'll make sure it's there. Yeah, it was there.
It was.
We have it in a Google folder, but it was there. But I'll make sure it's there. Thank you, doctor.
Thanks.
Maybe it's not stored in the file, so we'll find it. CDW, this is for a refresher for our teacher Chromebooks. And so this will be enough for all the staff that needs a new Chromebook for this school year. This is going to come out of Title 1 line. The next purchase would be computer science curriculum for our after-school program, which was our 21CCLC program. It's the REX program. It's what we used last year, and that comes out of the 21CCLC grant money. I did not, we didn't present it at the last board meeting because we didn't know about the 21CCLC money, so we want to make sure. The next item for purchase, this is exciting, is playground equipment for our kindergarten academy. We needed to add a new piece of playground equipment, and Ms. Peoples has been working very diligently this summer to get a good price on equipment. And so she went with Pro Playgrounds. So Pro Playgrounds will remove the old mulch, add the new piece of equipment, and put in the new mulch at this, at this price. And it was, we did get three quotes, and this was the best quote. So you'll see all three quotes in your packet, but this was the one we're going to go with, is the Pro Playgrounds. The next one, and we can do these all at once, okay, so the next one I do want to explain. So this was something we, we were told most recent this summer, that our HVAC unit at the ninth-grade academy gym was not working. We also have a gym on the seventh and eighth grade side, and that air conditioning is not working either. However, that gym is, needs several other upgrades as well, but the ninth-grade academy is available to be able to host our PE classes and health classes. And so we've asked for three bids, but right now, the bid that we have is from Pablo Heat and Air. And so we will go with the 25-ton unit, not the 35. We do not have to have a 35, a 25 will cool it. And, and right now, Pablo Heat and Air quote is $50,600 for that unit. And so I'm asking tonight for permission to purchase a unit up to $50,600. If we get quotes from the other companies as we're waiting, and they come in at a lower price, I'd go with the lower quote. But I don't want to have to wait till August board meeting to do so, because we do have the quotes coming. We've talked to, I know Mr. Franklin has spoken with Middleton Heat and Air and Scott Systems, and so we're, they're just having to come out and survey the building just to make sure they can give us an accurate quote. And so I'd like tonight to ask for permission to spend up to the $50,600 if this is the lowest quote. I'm hoping it's not, but we'll see. And then the next item on the agenda for purchase is our Imagine, it's actually Edgenuity, but Imagine Learning is the company that carries it, and it's a virtual, those are some of our virtual classes that we use for credit recovery and for some of our courses that we may not have a teacher for that we can offer virtually. And so this is also paid for out of restricted funds. We usually use ESA or Title money to do that. I didn't tell you about the air conditioning unit. The air conditioning unit would come out of operating, the playground equipment comes out of operating, the computers come out of Title 1, the REX comes out of 21CCLC, and Edgenuity comes out of Title 1 or ESA. It's where we can fit the budget best, but it's restricted.
Were some of those federal funds leased, were some of those Title 1? Or were they, did we just?
We, we knew we were going to get Title 1, so that was not one we were concerned about. But Title 2, Title 4, 21CCLC, those were all, which 21CCLC is part of Title 6 something, but yeah, those were all ones that we were concerned about, but we've been totally receiving them.
All right. At this time, going to approval of purchases. Let's roll one by one. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the teacher Chromebooks, CDW.
CDW with Title 1, yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the teacher Chromebooks, The move property second, written for question, comments, concerns. I have one question. The turnover, we talked about the turnover for the students. What is the turnover for Chromebooks for the teachers? Now, is this for the teachers or for their, their classrooms?
For their classroom.
Oh, okay, so, okay. Chromebooks.
Is it for their students or for them? That's right. No, but it's like their laptop.
Okay, so, now, what I was asking is, what's the turnover, the normal turnover time in five years? Okay. Right. Any other questions, concerns about Chromebooks? All right, here ain't none. All in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, the next item, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the computer science curriculum for after-school program, REX. The move property second, written for question. Any questions, comments, concerns? Here ain't none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, the next item, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve playground equipment, Pro Playgrounds. The move property second, written for question.
It's still 60. Yeah. Hang on, I'm going to look. For the total, it's $55,499.
I think there was one in there.
But it, it didn't have the removable of the, it did not have the, the new playground pedal stuff, like the rubber stuff. It's not included in that. And the other one that was a little bit cheaper also didn't have such a big, a larger piece of equipment. It was only like two swings, had a little seat all looking. Yeah, that was the cheaper one. But it didn't, it wasn't comparable to what this was.
That we did in the research on the pedals, that was not.
It's probably, it's not pedal. Yeah. Well, it's a little bit better than that, only because ABC has specific requirements that they have to have, and so we're going to stick with that. So since then, we added a sidewalk, we brought in loads of dirt, and so, yes, yes, thank you. That's right. It's still holding a little bit of water, so we're going to have to continue to bring it some.
That's the north side of the building. That's towards the, you can't cut the grass.
It's cut. It is, it's good. And the bush hold it. So you can see it now, it's cut. But it had to wait for it to dry out. But what you're talking about, though, where we built the sidewalk, is actually closer towards the gym. The gym's over here, but it's, it's over here. But yeah, but it's all right there in the back, so you can walk from one, so kindergarten can enter from this sidewalk, and cricket can enter from the other sidewalk, which is closer to the lawn. But yes, all that grass is cut.
All right, any other questions, Director Luck? Thank you for your questions. All right, here ain't none. All in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, next agenda item, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to allow Superintendent Barbara to purchase a HVAC unit up to $50,600, as long as it's the lowest bid. Okay.
Are we sticking with twenty-five ton?
Yes. Can't go lower because it won't be, it needs to be twenty-five or higher, but twenty-five will prove it. That thirty-five is too, I mean, it's not too good, but it's, it's not needed.
So how are we going to get a fair bid since?
Let me get a second, let me get a second. Let me get a second. Second, okay, discussion, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Director Lappin.
Okay, um, so we're moving to take the lowest bid at now fifty thousand six hundred. Now with this.
Hold on, Director Lappin.
Let me remind the audience, uh, please, please be quiet. Please be quiet. Before these conversations, step aside. Thank you. So how, how can we, with, with us putting this out and this being recorded, who's not to say that the company is bidding that you don't have? Or come in and say, hey, I can do it for fifty thousand. How can we safeguard this now?
We'll still have to look into what the best product is for sure.
Any other questions, did that satisfy?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Was that motion clear, Ms. Shelton? All right, you hear nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have it, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of Edgenuity Virtual Course, Imagine Learning. Moving property second, ready for question, any questions, comments, concerns? Here ain't none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have it, thank you very much. All right, this brings us to the end of our agenda. We, yeah, we're going to go into. Yes. Uh, reached to the end of our agenda, we're going to go into executive session. We thank the community leaders, the teachers, uh, the parents and students who have attended. Would you please exit the room at this time, it'll take about a five-minute break for more members kind of freshen up.